And I was like, it was one of those where I'm like, well, I wonder if they actually got a lot of snow or just anything else that's in town. Good, how are you?
Doing good.
Meetings keeping you busy?
Absolutely. Was here last night about this time, so.
Commissioners on us?
Yeah.
School board meetings, are those mainly it or do you always do all of them?
Um.
Like school board commissioners and us?
Yeah.
Do you do city council?
I don't do city, yeah.
Okay.
That is another board.
Oh, okay. That's to keep you busy, because I mean, normal is twice a month.
Twice a month, and then other districts are once a month. And there's stuff in between there, it's not just.
Do you do buffins and southern walls too?
No. Some have, more recently, they've been conflicting with other things that have got going on. So I'd amend the southern walls, she's been since October for their board meeting, but, um. Ones that I pretty much always ask.
There are like certain ones that are more priority.
Seven P M. We'll go ahead and get started. Vicki, can you leave us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, justice, law, order.
If you could bow your head. Our almighty Father in heaven, we're so grateful to be able to gather here tonight as elected officials to represent those of Wells County. We ask that you watch over us, you be with us, you help us to make the decisions that would be in your honor tonight as we go through the various things that we have to handle. We ask you to watch over our first responders, firefighters, police, sheriff, and those that work hard to take care of us every day, including our military who's currently serving on our border as well. We say these things in Jesus' name, amen. So first off, as a matter of record keeping, back on the back table, there is a sign up for public comment. If you are wanting to make public comment, ask that you sign the sheet in the back and state the reason for public comment. So it can be done anytime before the end of the meeting. So first off, uh, if we want to go ahead and approve the minutes from the January seventh meeting. I know Lisa has always did a good job getting them sent out. They look like, uh, they were accurate to me. Does anyone have any adjustments that need to be made to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them? Thank you, Todd. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. So the first additional that we have is for the, uh, jail sheriff. If you want to come up for. Just trying to keep it moving along.
Sorry.
So it looks like it's a nine hundred, nine thousand, sorry, nine thousand, uh, nine hundred dollars.
Uh, what's that one for? Remind me.
Contrashful services.
It's for continued I T. Work. Yep. I told you I would come back. We're not in any position to, to stop doing that at this point. So I'm kind of just doing it in a couple of month increments. So that'll get us through at least another couple of months and we can reevaluate then. And I'll keep you guys apprised of where we're at with that, so.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yep. Is that the only one I had?
That's the only one I'm seeing on here. We're actually.
There's a.
Oh, the bulletproof vest partnership. Is that you?
It was a, you talk about how long it takes the federal government. We applied for that grant five years ago. Our vests are warranted for five years. We applied for that grant five years ago when we got our vests. We're due for vests this year. And we just now got the funds, uh, from them on that, but we have to ask for it. It got put into an account, I believe. Um, and we have to ask for that money. So it's monies that we received from that grant to pay for the next new vest, so.
Good start.
It was a, I think it paid back half of what we paid for our vest last year, so, or not, five years ago.
Questions for the sheriff? If not, can I have a motion to approve? We'll do these two together. The jail for nine thousand nine hundred and the bulletproof vest partnership for five thousand nine fifty-eight. Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Cume Bridge Fund, we have requests for sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Um, yeah, so the sixty-eight thousand dollars is just to, uh, reappropriate leftover funds from last year as well as a small amount of additional, um, the contract got pushed out. It changed letting dates with N dot, which brought us past our point for our environmental permits. So the design firm actually had to go through the permitting process again. So there was a supplement that we got approved at, I believe, the last commissioner's meeting. So it's just the remaining funds for P E. Services as well as that supplement.
Where is Bridge fifty-four?
Bridge number one.
It's great.
Fifty-four, yeah. Any idea where that bridge is at?
Seventy-one on Two Hundred West is in my mind very much right now, so.
So it's a cat, it's a smaller bridge than, or, okay, okay. Nothing over the big rivers or anything, okay.
Any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Cume Bridge appropriation for sixty-eight thousand dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Todd. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nate.
Jenny? Wells County CASA Grant? Looks like there's a number of line items here.
There are.
Good evening. I'm here with Gina Bobold, uh, my CASA director. Jenny's the director, so I wanted to, she knows the nuts and bolts of the operation. So I'll pass it to her to just, I was just here to show my support for her and help her out if she needs anything, so.
I may need that.
You'll be fine.
Uh, so each year CASA programs in Indiana are awarded a monetary grant through the Indiana Supreme Court. And that, that, the number that each county gets is based on how many, uh, chins or child in need of service cases there were in that county the previous year. So this year, um, we were offered a matching grant of eighteen thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. And I want to thank you all so much for matching that grant for twenty twenty-five. In addition, we received a capacity grant, which is a non-matching grant from the state for seven thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars. So I just wanted to talk about a couple of things on this appropriations form that you have. Um, guardian ad litem salaries. What is that? Well, last year, as I mentioned in the letter that you received from me, we advocated for eighty-three children and youth who, um, had been abused or neglected in our county. But there were ten children that we could not serve. Uh, so they were served by guardian ad litem, in other words, attorneys, either because their cases originated before twenty twenty-one, when our program started, or because we just didn't have the capacity. We didn't have enough volunteers. So the money on that line item is used to pay the guardian ad litem salaries as they work for the children in our coun, in our county. Also, I thought I might mention travel a little bit. It looks like two thousand dollars. Where are these people going? Um, well, we are spending more time traveling further distances to get eyes on our kids every month. Uh, out of the eighty-three kids we served last month, twenty-four were teenagers. And it's difficult to place teenagers oftentimes inside Wells County and they're placed outside the county. Uh, last year, as far away as Fountain City, Laurel, South Bend, and Indianapolis. So we are driving further and mileage reimbursement is going up. And lastly, two thousand dollars for volunteer recognition. Uh, just because our volunteers spend so much time advocating for their kids with, you know, no monetary compensation. We do provide lunch for them at our monthly in-service trainings, small gifts throughout the year, and then a Christmas party with a larger gift at the end of the year. So again, thank you so much for supporting the CASA program. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer them. I'm sure Judge Kirikoff can do a better job.
I, I'm curious, do you, in the travels, do you in the group take these kids to different cities or?
Question.
How do they transport them?
We don't transport our children.
Okay.
Or families.
Okay.
Um, so let's say, for example, I have a fourteen-year-old placed in Indianapolis. So when I go to see him every month, I drive down there, make plans ahead of time, pick up some McDonald's, and, you know, have lunch with him. And so I keep track of my mileage and then it's reimbursed.
Okay.
And then all the volunteers do that. Not everybody has cases, if we're driving within the county, we don't reimburse that mileage. But when we're driving these further distances, we do. I have a question. Yes.
How many volunteers do you have on board now?
Well, throughout the year of twenty twenty-four, we had twenty.
Okay.
But we've had a couple leave, and so we're down to, hmm, what, what did I say? Yeah, we're down to eighteen. But we do have two, uh, people who have volunteered to be trained, and we're starting our training in early March, so that will get our numbers back up. It, it's a big commitment, and, um, it takes a special person to be a volunteer, so, yeah.
That's great work you guys do.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Jenny? All right. If not, do I have a motion to approve the appropriations for the Wells County CASA grant? Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vicki. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, next, we'll, uh, do the library update. Uh, Sarah, Dustin, and Lauren, who is all here?
I have a question. Was there one more? I've seen one, I just lost it. It was the, the bond, something to do with the bond with Sean Omar.
I don't see it listed on the agenda.
I'm sorry, just my phone just went. Here we go.
Oh, you know what it was not on? Yeah, my apologies. That was not on the, uh. Yeah, it wasn't on the additionals on the agenda, but there is one listed here.
It showed it being a fee for administration fee from U S.
Yeah, let me take a look at that, Todd, real quick. Yeah, we requested additional five hundred due to administration fees to U S. Bank for the bond for the new highway garage. Yeah, thank you. It ended up on the agenda, Todd. Thank you for picking it up.
I'm curious, that, when I've seen that, I'm, is that, the project isn't closed out yet, is it?
No. Is this a trustee fee?
It's a trustee fee.
So there's trustee that, that has to oversee it, and there's just cost to it.
So each time, so there'll probably be another one.
I believe last year was fifteen hundred dollars that we paid for the trustee's fee.
So it just goes on and on and on, okay, okay. Is that money coming out of?
Yeah, good catch, Todd.
That account, out of the, the? It had a number on it. I was just.
B nine oh five.
Yeah, so highway garage site prep is what they're creating it out of, okay.
Yeah, so. No, it didn't end up on the agenda, so thank you for catching that. So do I have a motion to approve the five hundred dollar administration fee for the County Highway Garage Fund?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Vicki. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks again, Todd, for catching that. All right, now, ready for both of you. Welcome.
Good, yes, thank you for making time for us this evening. Um, as we have been doing quarterly, I think, the last couple of years.
Twice with you guys.
Yeah, similar, twice.
Okay, okay, all right. So we're here to just provide an update on what's happening, uh, with the library. So we have what, uh, Sarah has handed out to you is just basically a twenty twenty-four in review. I'm not going to read it to you, obviously, but there are a few highlights here that I'd like to, um, bring to your attention. First is the first item here, our four hundred ninth finisher in the thousand books before kindergarten program. This is, you know, the studies have shown that exposure to literature at a very young age tends to increase all positive outcomes, educationally speaking. So we have this program. It's well entrenched in four hundred and nine finishers, uh, is pretty fantastic, thirty-five of them in twenty twenty-four. Moving down a little bit, uh, we've served three accredited daycares, fourteen preschool classrooms, three kindergarten classes, two intense intervention classes, and hosted weekly storytime visits for the Bluffton High School Life Skills Class. This is an outreach where we're trying to bring some of the material, library materials into the community instead of the community having to always come to the library. Uh, we offered free tax assistance in partnership with A A R P. and local volunteers to three hundred and fifty-three patron, patrons during the tax season in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we installed a, the state's legal kiosk to help patrons with legal forms. This is a computer upstairs that they can go to and download any forms they might need for whatever kind of legal issues, uh, they need to address. Uh, we had a very successful to, total solar eclipse event at the library. It was very well attended. Uh, and we partnered with Purdue Fort Wayne and the Fort Wayne Astronomical Society to pull that off. We added pickup lockers i- in three locations, in Bluffton, Ossian, uh, and Southern Wells High School in an effort to make library materials available to people who can't come to the library during hours when they're open, so they can place holds and they're put in the lockers for them to use. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we had three hundred and twenty-two uses in Bluffton, uh, seventeen hundred and seventy-four at Ossian. So it's quite popular up there, and then two hundred and seventy-two picked up at Southern Wells. As far as staff accomplishments, we had our fifteenth staff member graduate from the Wells County Leadership Academy. And the sixth, sixteenth staff member is currently in level one. And the staff members at the library are also serving on numerous, um, community and professional boards. Uh, there's a list of them here, but we're very engaged i- in the community at large. And then the, this last section here is some statistics. Probably the most important ones that I want to make you aware of are our, the uptick in physical material circulation is up twenty-four percent against twenty twenty-three numbers. And we kind of view anything twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three as post-pandemic. So it's, we were kind of back where we were before COVID hit, and we're seeing additional increases of, above that. So we're well above pre-pandemic levels. Uh, that number goes up to thirty-one percent if you include all of the electronic items, uh, that are now circulating. We had a thirty-four percent increase in supervised visits. That has to do largely with, I guess, you want to speak to what supervised visits are?
Um, so you have your traditional supervised visit where the, um, like a D C S. Worker is observing the parent with the child. Those don't happen quite as often. A lot of times, these are, um, like Bowen representatives that are working with kids in a mentorship type fashion. They need a safe place to go that they can have, um, activities to play with them after they've worked on homework and stuff like that. And so a lot of times they come to the library for that, especially in the winter, because they can't go to the parks in the winter, so.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, the programming attendance had a twenty-nine percent increase. And the only real decrease that we've, of note, that we've seen is the patron count, and that's down three percent from twenty twenty-three. However, those who are coming to the library are clearly using it more than they had been. With the, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent increases on, on those metrics. So that is, in a nutshell, if I had to summarize it, I would say that, um, the services of the library are being really well utilized. Appreciative of, of your support in providing those services.
Dustin and Sarah, we're, we're now in that time of year where tax services starting to creep back into play.
Yeah, we're in the middle of it.
So what, so anybody if the paper posts it, what's the criteria for which you will offer the free? I know it's in conjunction with A A R P., so is there an age limit?
There is not an age limit.
Okay.
They just ask it to be simple taxes. So just very straightforward taxes. There's a tax packet you need to fill out before you, um, go to your appointment. Um, but if you have a lot of, um, like, extra things that you own, buildings, land, that sort of thing.
A lot of different schedules.
Yeah, they, they don't.
Was that outlined in the packet so that they?
Yeah, I think for the most part. So we're currently full, um, and we are working with volunteers to open up, uh, maybe times on Tuesdays as well, so.
So you're already booked up?
That we are going to open up Tuesdays and hopefully.
Okay.
Have more available. But usually you have to call, like, the first, I don't know.
Okay.
Couple weeks in January if you want to get an appointment, so.
Well, it's a good service, so, thanks for providing. Any other questions for Sarah Dustin? All right, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Waiting for go around number two. Wanting Roger, if you want to come on up and. Welcome.
Thank you. A couple of comments before I begin. Number one, I've been urged by two of you to make this as brief as possible. I'm going to try to honor that. I also know that to do that, the best way for me to do it is to have it in writing and then read it to you. No insult intended. I will try to read fast, but would be glad to take any questions. I want to acknowledge that part of the, uh, comments are quotes from the news banner. And I appreciate the library, uh, putting those together for Councilman Elsie. And when, uh, Brandy called, they said, we've already got that information. So, uh, Councilman Elsie, thank you for, uh, doing that. President Wicker, uh, Councilmember Lambert, and Huggins, and Monyn Smith, and Harnish, and Andrews, and Elsie, and Deputy Officer, Auditor for Claims, Iker. Thank you for the opportunity to share some history, a few thoughts, a perspective, and a request with you this evening. We come tonight with sincere appreciation for the commissioner's action of last evening and with hope that we can receive your support as well. First, some history. On January eighth nineteen seventy, with a temperature of minus twelve degrees, Howard Rich presented to the Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, of which he was a member, a challenge to build a community pool. One of the earliest contributors to what became a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar project was Mr. Edward Schaefer of Franklin Electric. Their thirty-six thousand dollar contribution then would equal two hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars today. Corning Glass pledged twenty thousand dollars along with many others. The news banner report stated, initiated through the efforts of the Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, with donations being taken by the Wells County Foundation, the pool will be constructed by the Bluffton Park and Recreation Board, quote, "for the equal use of all county residents." He later stated that, quote, "He hoped the pool would be made available for use of all county residents at a fee low enough that all could afford." Howard Rich stated that he was gratified that Bluffton Industry and its leaders have, quote, "shown again that they have a primary interest and concern for the quality of life in Wells County and in the families who live here." Constructed on land made available, the Wells County four-H. Board, at that time, I would add, Bluffton Schools had offered some land as well, but it wasn't really solid exactly where it would be. They were wanting to move ahead, so they chose to accept the four-H. Offer. The, uh, its lifespan has, uh, extended some fifty years. As you're aware, the vision of the pool's service to the community has been significant. And support for a community pool for the future, we have experienced, is very strong. The results from a Parks Department survey were telling. A thousand two hundred forty-four people responded to the survey with ninety-one point five percent rating the pool very important, seven point four percent somewhat important. Ninety-three percent thought the pool should cater to children. Seventy-nine percent thought they ought to cater to teenagers, sixty-two point four percent to adults, and forty-five percent to seniors. That's not bad math, because if you add those up, it far exceeds a hundred. It's just an indication of the belief it should serve everyone. Reasons for supporting a new pool included recreation, seventy-nine percent, exercise and fitness, thirty-eight, social gatherings, forty-nine point five nine, and community attraction, sixty-one point two percent. Secondly, some thoughts. When we worked to raise funds for Lancaster Park, we didn't approach county government because each city or town has some form or function of parks, and the cost is manageable for the most part within their budgets. Wells County has only one community pool, and from its inception, inception, both in vision and in practice, all county residents have been treated equally. And admission costs have been equally applied at a level all could afford. That, those two statements are really important for us to understand how the pool function. Our work in seeking funds for the pool construction is progressing positively. The committee members, Chip Mann, Mark Millard, Josh Hunt, Blake Feekter, and myself have received a very positive reception and response. I'm pleased to announce that we have received interest at every level of our fundraising categories, and those are in the flyer that you received ahead of time. As you know, the city of Bluffton has committed approximately five million dollars to the project. Harrison Township, two hundred fifty thousand, and Lancaster Township, a hundred ten thousand. It's the committee's recommendation that contribute, all contributing levels of government be so listed on the donor plaque, not by how much they gave, but the fact that a governmental unit participated. Third, a perspective. As leaders of Wells County Government, your responsibilities are huge. As a resident and taxpayer, I thank you for your willingness to serve. Too often, your decisions must address the costs of those who do wrong and/or are a threat to our community. Our law enforcement is highly effective. The cost to keep our community safe is a necessary cost, and obviously would be higher absent strong fiscal management and effective enforcement. The two thousand twenty-five budget for the prosecution of lawbreakers and jail expenses, housing those who were involved, were in excess of two point four million dollars. Again, I come in support of those expenses and most of all, the effectiveness of those who serve us in that regard. Fourth, a request. The excellent quality of life we experience daily here is not dependent on those who break the law. Rather, it's determined by the great moms and dads and families who work, pay their taxes, raise their families, and generally make life what it is every day in Wells County. In that sense, we are a lot like nineteen seventy. Howard Rich, Edward Schaefer, and many others set the standard. Albert Meyer, president of the Board of Commissioners at that time, praised the pool and expressed his support. We come tonight to ask for your approval of Wells County's contribution of eight hundred thousand dollars towards the cost of the pool project. The exact cost will not be known until the bids are in. As we've shared with contributors, any excess funds, should they occur, would be retained by the Wells County Foundation for maintenance and replacement costs as they occur in the future years. As I learned in my visit to the Napoleon Ohio Pool, and I must tell you, if you get a chance to travel there, it's exciting even without water in it. It's just a neat place that, that's highly attractive to anyone who would go. In, in visiting there, I learned that our, our, our extra funds, should there be any, should include certainly replacement pumps and motors to be re, on the ready should one fail so that the pool can be up and running again. The last thing you want is for that pool to be down in the heat of summer, because you don't have a pump or you don't have a motor. At a later date, some discussion should occur regarding how yearly costs not covered by pool revenue should be shared. That discussion is for another day. We hereby submit our request for your consideration and hopefully approval of the eight hundred thousand dollar contribution towards the cost of the pool project to be paid in either twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six or a combination thereof, along with your best wishes for the pool's service to the people of, of, uh, Wells County. Thank you. I'd be glad to answer questions, and if any are above my pay grade, I'll pass them to the people behind me.
Roger, just one, one quick question, uh, with the eight hundred thousand dollars. Would you, of obviously raising any funds for a project this big, it can be allocated in a lot of different ways. Can you give a description on what this money will be able to do for the project that otherwise, if you don't get it, may not be able to be done?
Your standing, and if I'm incorrect, I trust that either Mr. Mensah or Ms. Speaker will re, will correct me. But it's my understanding that the city's contribution was to cover the basic pool. That along with a ready grant. That along with a ready grant. There are so many amenities that need to be added to that. The climbing wall, the, the various parts of the park that will add to its value to people. A new pool house, the dressing area. Now, I want to caution you, we, if we should see, receive a large enough contribution, that's $500,000, the committee, with the approval of others, has said that would pay for the naming of the pool house. That's not exactly where that money might go. It's the, the money, when it hits the, the fund, is going to turn green. And I can't tell you it'll go exactly here or here, but it will go to bring the amenities to the pool that are not included in the base.
I'll go over that in some more detail.
That'd be great, if you want to come on up, Scott.
Any other questions for Roger before?
Are there items in the pool now, in any way, shape, or form, that can be used in a new pool project?
I believe that's very doubtful. I am not the person to answer that best. But what I'll tell you is, if we want it to last 50 years, we think that the best shot is to fully equip it from the get-go. And that's how we've presented it to contributors. That's the best aim, sir, I can give you, Steve.
So, we, we started off looking at potentially using some of the mechanicals of the pool. After we went and visited, we visited five different towns who all went through complete remodels. And the universal suggestion to us was not, it was not to do that. The technology has changed so significantly since, you know, that equipment was put in place, that, again, the consensus was, start fresh, get equipment that's under warranty, get the best equipment that you can, you could possibly afford, and don't put a brand-new pool at jeopardy, because you've got a 20-year-old piece of maintenance equipment in the pool. So that's, that's the approach we're taking.
I've got one quick question. In the paper, there was an article in there that explained you may move the location of the existing pool to a closer to the road.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through that in my presentation.
Well, my only question to that was, originally, that land was donated to, you know, from the 4-H Park, where it is now, where it sits now. If that was to happen to be vacated, would that go back to the, possibly to the 4-H Park? Or?
So, all, all the land is under title to the city now?
Yeah, it's under deed to the city.
And as you'll see, when I go through that presentation, we'll have use for both parcels of the land, should we choose to, to move the location of the pool. And I'll talk a little bit about what the pros and cons are with, with that.
Other questions for me? Thank you.
You don't have to be so quick to move, Roger. You could sit there if you want, I mean.
Brandy's better looking.
Okay. I can let you switch pla, switch places in.
Please don't take a vote on that, you don't need to.
Scott, do you need the monitors turned on?
I, if you don't mind, that would be awesome.
I have no idea.
I guess if you want to rehearse, we'll just start pressing the remote.
Instructions. I wondered. Put some on Facebook.
I have no idea where you start. That's why Lisa, yeah, Lisa McCray always handles.
Tech guy, right?
Seth, you want to hit this one again? I don't know that it's coming out.
The red light went off on it, so. The fear is if I do it back there, it'll shut off all the ones I just turned on. At least one behind over there, but you can see that at least. There you go. There it is. Just, yeah, did it? I think. What's that?
Nobody gave me advice to be short. So, I, I may be, I may be a little longer. So, again, you know, you guys have seen a number of these slides. I'm gonna go through some slides we presented to the commissioners. But I want to address, exactly address your question, which is, where would the funds that, that we asked the commissioners for last night, and we come here tonight, go to? And sort of what is the plan going forward in terms of the rest of the project? This, this, as I presented, and the first time, is, is the vision. And this vision came from, again, visiting five different cities around Bluffton, all who went through a remodel effort. And we got a lot of great advice, and we feel like we've pulled from best practices from each one of those areas. But this, this is the vision, this is the pool, the, the surrounding structures and the amenities. But in terms of funding, this is, the, the portion of money that the city has targeted funds basically what you see in front of you, which is the pool itself and a couple amenities. The estimated cost of what you see is $6.5 million. 20% of that being funded by a ready grant. I, I talked to the ready people, again, today about that grant. Everything seems to still be in line. City is contributing 1.25 million out of its general fund, cash reserves, $400,000 out of its CEDAT cash reserves. And tonight, City Council took action on a bond resolution to affect the $3.55 million out of the Adam Strip, Adam Street Tiff Bond, future revenues. So a total city commitment of $5.2 million. Just note that that, that is the amount of cash going to the project. The city is also paying for bond cost and interest on the bond. So the total is obviously higher than that 5.22. What we presented to the commissioners last night, and we come in front of you tonight, is, again, for, for $800,000. And what specifically that would go towards is a new pool house, and we've got money budgeted for landscaping. We did have, we do have the initial project, about a quarter of a million dollars to remodel the existing pool house. But as we've talked to others, you know, again, the interesting thing about this project is, is when you go and you ask for people to participate, they're, they're all really excited to participate. They all have their individual ask. It's like, well, if you could only add this, we would be willing to participate. So the scope changes literally as we sort of go out and talk to people. But there was a lot of people who were pretty adamant that if we're gonna put $6.5 million in a pool, they didn't want to have people walk through a 50-year-old pool house. Although, I'll give credit to Brandy. She's done a really good job over the years, keeping it refreshed. But still, you know, the consensus was, we want to walk through a really nice pool house, get, to get to a really nice pool. This money allows us to do that. The pool house that we have is designed very much like the jury pool house. So that's what you see in front of us. Again, we've been through every pool house, we've seen them all. There's been a, a number of them that they would have done it differently. But the jury pool house was one of those where there was very few things they would have changed. There'll be a few things that we want to change, but for the most part, that's the model. We've got the, we, we were given the plans of that pool house. Our developer has those plans. We intend to make a few outside exterior changes based on the Napoleon pool house. So again, trying to pick up best practices. Why is this important? Well, there's a number of reasons. One, the current pool house is not ADA compliant. This pool house gives an open concept to enter into the pool. It's got a dedicated party rental room. That was one of the rooms that New Haven told us generated fairly significant rental revenue for them that we don't have today. It's got two family restrooms, we have no family restrooms. Individual private stalls, a private first aid room, two admission windows, much more room in our concession stand, storage rooms, guard room, manager's office, and utility chaise. So, functionally, it's not only much more effective, but just visually, it's much more appealing.
So Scott, I've got a, a quick question. When you look at, because it was brought to me by somebody else regarding the party room in particular, that you've already got the Washington Street, you know, you've got the pavilion over there to use, there's a lot of other party room facilities. Will that all compete with this within the park system?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's always some of that, to be fair, Seth.
Okay.
But, you know, the idea of the party room is, it's at the pool, right? So you get the benefit of the pool with your party.
Okay.
So I think there's certainly going to be some circumstances where people want the asset of the pool, as well as to be able to have a party at the pool.
So you will be able to rent the pool out for parties and for various occasions?
Yeah, we're hoping.
Or is that to be determined?
We're hoping to rent it during the day. The thing is, now, is we rent it in the evening, so my guards have to work all day and then all night again. If we can rent it during the day, because we've got that space, they can get their pizzas, their cake in there, and have a whole celebration, and use it during the day, so I don't have to make my guards work again that night, where I, I could be already paying them to be there, and I've got large parties that are going to make my attendance go well. So it's like, it's just being smart about it, and not having them work so late.
You'd still have it open, though, for general?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And, and again, we were really conscious of talking to all the different pool managers, what were their sources of revenue, right? What, what moved the needle? And for New Haven, this was something that, that moved the needle for them. So we wanted to make sure we captured that in our.
And were they doing their parties during the day in New Haven, too?
They were, yeah. They do them in two-hour blocks, so they can do them back to back to back. So you can really generate quite a bit.
All right, good.
So the, these are the other amenities, and I'm not going to go through all these. I mean, we talked about these in the first session. But what I, what I did want to share with you tonight is, so of the amenities, the, the water slide and the vortex is in the base. So that is funded by the city. The rest of these are the amenities that, that Roger and his group are out actively trying to fundraise. It's easier to fundraise for an amenity. It's harder to fundraise for landscaping, right? Although they're all, they're all necessary costs. So of these particular amenities, which is, again, sort of in the original vision, there's $360,000 of fundraising left to do. And again, the fundraising committee is working hard at that. There's other items that I'm going to say are additional scope. But, you know, again, as we talk to people, and as we talk to other communities, we think are wants, perhaps not needs, but certainly wants. Therapy jets, well, let me talk about the first, the, the big-ticket item. So in the upper right-hand corner, you're gonna see a separate area that we call a deep zone. And if you look to the right-hand side, that, this is the concept that we have in the base plan, where there's a dedicated portion of the, of the eight lanes for the swimming competition that is deep. We want a deep section, because we want to maintain a diving board. We've got a zip line, we've got a rock wall, and all those require a deep end. But we also want a sufficient number of lap lanes for seniors and adults. And that deep end constricts the number of lap lanes that are available. So, right now, the scoping committee is considering, if we can bump out that deep zone, that adds more lap lanes for adults and seniors just during non-swim events. So we're, we're estimating that if we add that bump out to the scope, that that's going to add roughly $300,000 to the pool cost. We've also added some money into therapy jets. This was a, a feature in New Haven that we, we could add to the scope. The existing playground is pretty dated. We've had lots of discussions whether we even should have a playground. But there's people who want a playground. We did not include the, the pavilion in the original scope. We were going to keep the existing pavilion. And again, same idea, you know, people are like, hey, they're gonna put all this money in a new pool, let's put a new pavilion in. So we've added that, again, as, as a want, not a need. New lounge chairs, new lifeguard stands. Everyone has advised us to put a security system in. That was not in the original scope. Our concession equipment certainly can use a refresh. We got challenged last night, rightfully so, by the commissioners to drive concession revenue. So we need to be a little bit more proactive and think outside of the box in terms of our concession equipment. Point of sale, right now, we're, we're cash. And so we're, we're trying to, you know, open up our window a little bit, take credit cards, have a point-of-sale system, be able to better track inventory. And then, as Roger mentioned, a future, a future maintenance escrow. So we've targeted a half a million dollars for a future maintenance escrow. Right now, we've parked our Harrison and our Lancaster money in this bucket. If we can't fundraise for some of these others, we may pull money out of that bucket and fund some of the other amenities. So with that sort of wants-not-needs category, that's another $835,000, which, again, we're actively trying to fundraise. Would also like to make some parking lot improvements. Again, same idea, right? I mean, today, when the attendance at the pool is high, we have people parking in the grass. The existing parking lot certainly could use a refresh. We've got quotes on this, this is roughly a $250,000 bill. So again, that adds to our, our fundraising list. Want to deviate just a little bit? We're going through some master planning work now. The county's going through the same exercise with Verdis. And one of the, one of the principles coming out of that master planning work is, it's been talked about for a long time, a, a riverfront hub to more actively redevelop or develop parcels on the riverfront. So i, in that spirit, we're looking at, we, the, the city of Bluffton owns this parcel right along the, the river. It's actually where our park's maintenance garage is. It's sort of right behind parties in, in that area. So one of our thoughts is to vacate that parcel and move the maintenance ground into the same area next to the pool. That's got some benefits just from a pure maintenance efficiency. But again, it allows us to, allows the city to vacate that parcel, and it could become available for redevelopment, for somebody else to develop something on the riverfront, rather than putting a maintenance garage on it. So there's obviously cost if we wanted to pursue that. But as we started to look at that, the, you know, the other thought that came to mind was, maybe the better idea is to physically, rather than to put a maintenance garage in that space, actually move the pool into that space. This has a couple of benefits. One, we just think that visually, having the pool closer to Spring Street, people will see it, they'll know it's there, they'll see the new amenities, and it'll be a more attractive feature. Surprisingly, we cannot put a sign out on, on State Road 1 to direct people to the pool. By state statute, because the pool is only open for a few months per year, we can't put a sign out. So the more visible we can get the pool, we feel that's, that's beneficial. The other advantage that this gives us is we can start construction on that effectively immediately, and continue to utilize the pool in its existing location through the 2025 season. Our original timeline had us getting through the 2025 season and starting demolition at the end of the season in August. This allows us to start basically right away. Additionally, if we did, if we made this move, we would take the existing pool house, and rather than demoing it, the, the parks and maintenance, the Parks Department would actually use it as part of their maintenance and storage. So we would still get some serviceability out of that building. So we, we feel like this has got some merit. We've got to talk about this with our developer during our, with our scoping committee, and make sure there's no, there's nothing there that we're not seeing. But right now, I think we're leaning towards this approach, rather than the original approach. So, again, you know, just wanted to give you some, some additional information where the project's at. It's, until we get through our scoping committee, which will take another probably six weeks or so, we won't know what the final project looks like, and what the costs look like. But we feel like we're pretty far along. And Roger and his team's doing a great job getting out in front of people and, and fundraising. So happy to answer any additional questions.
Scott, is there enough room for parking in that new location?
Yeah, so we would go ahead and do what you saw in the photo before and add the additional 50 stalls. And that's going to put it closer to that new pool if we were to leave that up there. So they would have the new 50 stalls and the remainder of that. We could still put some maybe ADA accessible handicap parking like up close by the door.
You're, you're talking about if it's at the same location it's at right now, the same site?
If we were to move the pool up front like, like you're seeing now.
No, no, no. About this new location you're talking about, by the river?
Oh, the river location? I don't know what would go there. I don't know what development would happen.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking, the pool, the pool doesn't go there, yeah.
Vacating it for riverfronts.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No.
Okay, okay.
Pool staying in the same area. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maintenance garage.
In either proposal, we would be vacating the riverfront parcel.
Yeah.
And moving maintenance onto the, the pool property.
Yeah.
But the pool stays still inside the property, right? Just like the picture reflects. Both of those parcels are city parcels.
It's still a state highway garage property there, yeah.
Does that, did I explain that?
I think everybody was under the impression you were talking about moving the pool there.
No.
There too, and there first.
No. So we're just, we're, we're moving, so if you look at that picture to the left, we're moving the pool from the back up towards Spring Street.
Right.
We would still vacate the, the parcel on the river and move the maintenance to the, to the old pool property.
Right, right.
And in this scenario, we could take advantage of the old pool house as part of our maintenance garage and storage.
As well as the fencing, the lighting, the things that are already there, we could keep. So we won't have to put that.
So in essence, we get to repurpose some of the existing pool structure for the purpose of maintenance. And it actually puts our maintenance people next to the pool. And it's actually a little better centrally located to service the other parks, the parks as well, like Roush Park, Lions Park.
Could save on demolition too. We won't have to take that down now.
I'm sorry if that was.
I'm with you, yeah. First I was like Steve, I was like Steve.
So we would just be moving it forward towards Spring Street.
And so if you move it forward towards Spring Street, there would be, you'd be utilizing the existing parking.
Yeah, so, so that area on Spring Street right now where you see semis and trucks parking, the, the pool would be there, right?
And the parking is where it is currently.
Man moving forward.
Man moving forward closer to the pool to fill in that gap.
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha.
So again, conceptual at this point, right? I mean, we've got to get through the scoping and really.
The concept makes sense.
Really flesh it out.
Any other questions?
I have one more question. How's the fundraising going? From individuals, corporations, all that?
One that I can announce is that the Kayler Nickel Foundation has committed to naming rights for the competition pool. And that's a $250,000 ticket that they have committed. We have other significant discussions underway, but not to a point that I can give you a number tonight. All I can tell you is that we will tend to underestimate revenue until we have it in writing. Just because I don't want to mislead anybody. But we are hoping to wrap up within the next couple of weeks to the end of February, somewhere in there. And when we get to a point where we get significant numbers in writing, we'll be glad to share that. I would share with you that should any of you wish to individually or your firms commit, we have ranges of donations as are listed in the flyer. A thousand dollars typically for individuals or very small businesses. We'll welcome all funds and anything of a thousand dollar or more will be listed on the permanent plaque in the pool area. And we're, I just received a, a commitment today for $12,500. So it, sometimes it comes in big chunks, sometimes smaller, but it, we're, we're working. We've been at it a couple of weeks, a little over that. And so it takes a while for businesses, organizations, individuals to think about it, make up their mind. And so we're, we're underway.
When would you guys want that money from any pledge?
The money can come either in '25 or '26 or a combination thereof. The city's funding will carry, we believe, the expenses in '25. Now, if they start a little early, then that might change a little bit, but I don't think it will a lot. But I think, I think we'll be okay.
So someone can pledge towards it not actually.
Right. And all contributions go to the foundation and no one personally touches them. So that's an important concept for our committee because we don't want any question of any.
Yeah, just.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Just to add one little thing, just so everyone's aware, the, the ready money, so this 1.3 million dollars from Ready, that by definition is last money in. So we won't get access to that ready money until the project's in essence is, is finished. So it is, there is a timing issue as we look at donations that we have to be cognizant of. But again, we council passed the bond ordinance tonight. We should get through bond closing in probably April, May timeframe. So that, that will generate three and a half million dollars for the project. And, you know, the city's got 1.6 million dollars that we'll be funding out of cash reserve. So that, that will carry us forward for a while, I mean, for, for a long while. But that 1.3 million's lasting, so we sort of have to fill in, fill in those gaps.
Is that state grant, that Ready?
It, it's, it's a state grant, so the state made the monies available and then each region gets a certain amount of money. So we, we have to work with the Northeast Region for application to the grant. I was also in a conversation with, with the Ready people today, explaining that maybe our scope might expand a little bit. So maybe we can capture a little bit of that expansion in the Ready portion and get a little more 20%. It, it won't be a lot, but it could be another $100,000, $150,000.
At this stage in the project, are you, do you have what you need from the county's side?
Yes. Again, scope is everything, right? And we're, we're counting on fundraising. I think at this point, it's appropriate that we fundraise, that we go out and we try to get as much private donations as possible without coming back to public sources and asking for more. So we, we accept that and, and we're going to go out and work hard on it. If there's a point in time where we feel like there's a, a need that would be in the best interest of the community, maybe there's a conversation to be had, but I think it's inappropriate for us to expect that at this point. You know, you've been very generous or the commissioners were very generous last night. And, you know, we're, we're pleased to move forward with that and put the burden on us to go out and fundraise.
As a, just a comment, I can tell you, watching the scope of this project evolve from potential pool remediation to, okay, let's replace the pool. Okay, there was, as you mentioned, okay, if we're going to put in a new pool, let's, let's get a new pool house. And then this has grown into, in a positive way, well, we can kind of kill two birds with one stone. We can clear out this riverfront development for potential use down the road. We can move the location of the pool so it's more attractive. It's been, it's been really rewarding to watch good ideas stack on top of good ideas over the course of the last month. And to sort of see where it is now, I'm, I'm very optimistic.
Yeah, this is probably premature and I probably shouldn't say it in a public session, but just to, to lean into that good on ideas, on the good ideas. The city's got a pretty old water tower on the, the west side of town that we've got to put a lot of money into. So we're having discussions about possibly building a new water tower. And so part of the discussion has been, well, we own all this land. Maybe we put the water tower on one of these parcels. And when we paint the water tower, it says the Wells County Community Pool. If I can't put a sign out on State Road One, I'll put a water tower up there that tells everybody where my pool's at, so.
Good idea.
You should sell a private sponsorship.
Have logos all over it by the time it's done. Yeah, Roger.
Can I make one more comment? One of the exciting things to the fundraising committee is the quality of leadership in this county and city right now. And the fact that we get along. I appreciate that more than you know and, and the community sees that. There is a synergism happening there, just to know that folks are working together and, and that's so much appreciated. One other comment, the leadership of Scott in terms, and the council, along with the mayor, in terms of the regional sewer district and other kinds of things and cooperation, and your cooperation as a county makes that all possible. And as a taxpayer who's not in elected office, I want to say thank you. One more thank you, it's the lady sitting in front of me. Not only is she better looking, but she is doing a heck of a job, far more hours than she should be putting in. And we're fortunate.
We are lucky. So the, the next steps from this council is, with the commissioners going ahead and approving $800,000 out of their economic development lit, I believe in, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I was not there last night, is that we will be doing an appropriation of those funds at our next meeting. Obviously Lisa's not here, she didn't have time to draw it up between last night and today. And it has to be published and everything else, so, yeah, there's some things they have to go through to be able to get that done. So the, the idea would be at the March meeting, is that we will go through the formal process of, everybody has a vote on what they want to do with the ability to do the appropriation, but we will be asked to put that on the floor next time at our March meeting. So that'll be the next steps.
And, you know, Brandon's on the scoping committee, so he always can give you updates as, as he gets them. I won't, I won't come and bore you anymore with PowerPoint presentations, but I'm always willing to come and give you an update on where the project's at, how fundraising is going, so just, just give me a call.
And I appreciate, I know I've bugged you a lot over the last several weeks on this issue. And obviously, everybody knows how to get ahold of Scott if you have more questions directly or Roger. Ream Brandy, thank you for all that you are doing yeoman's work with this as well.
It's still amazing. It was built for $350,000 originally. It's amazing.
Fifty years of inflation.
Yeah, 50 years of inflation. It's incredible, so.
Well, thank you both so much.
Scott, Ream's presentation and writing next.
Yeah, yeah, I like the visuals, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. So the next thing I would like to do is that we actually have, not on our agenda, but we do have a special guest. Mr. Pietro, if you want to come on up, our new EMA director and just, I, sorry, my apologies, I should have done this in the beginning so you didn't have to wait through the whole entire meeting here. But if you want to introduce yourself and I'm really excited you're in this post.
Well, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's John Pietro, recently appointed as your new Director of Emergency Management. So this position comes rather new to me. I've spent the last 35 years in the fire and EMS in the private sector, so county, government's all new. So there'll be some learning curves there. But other than that, my door's open. If you have questions, by all means, stop by and see us. I'm looking forward to the adventure. This week, I'm already taking FEMA classes Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday up in Elkhart. So luckily enough, we got out a little bit early tonight so I could come back for your meeting, so. But other than that, there's, there's a lot going on next door in our office and.
I'm just going to be excited to see all the different grants and other opportunities maybe you'll uncover out there as far as, we're talking about radios right now. We have a lot of things out there that are big ticket items that, obviously every grant dollar we get's one we don't have to fund.
Correct.
So.
We're just getting started, like I said, you know, two weeks in, pardon me, two weeks in and there's some already talks with me and the state level about what grants are open, what grants can be, might be able to be utilized for the radios and stuff.
That'd be great.
Small steps to begin with because like I said, it's all something new for me, but challenge accepted.
Awesome. Right, thank you. Yep. And then the last, before we get to public comment, the last one is just the approval of 2025-1 salary ordinance. So do I have a motion to approve the 25-1 salary ordinance?
And that includes EMA director, so.
Yep. She had marked, maybe she marked where I signed it, let me see.
I think she greened.
Well, Green's where, yeah, the screen over here. See, on the back page here. You have the EMA director. So it's on this, it should be the third page from the back, I believe. It's a graph with.
On the matrix.
Thank you.
Here, EMA director.
We just need to prove it. So is there a motion to approve the 2025-1 salary ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, that's Brandon, right?
Yep.
Okay, a second? Thanks, Brian. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then the, the last thing is, Mr. Fennelly, hopefully I didn't say that incorrectly. You're, you signed up for public comment and just again, the idea of public comment is, normally it's three minutes, but I think I mentioned you five, so I'll acknowledge my five minutes for you.
As best I can.
And then it's, yeah, your idea is, again, it's for public comment, comment on what you want to cover. And it's up to council if we want to ask any questions or not, but we don't have to respond, so.
Thanks for having me out here and hearing me today. I'll have to give me a moment. I was going to do the same thing, trying to read off of something rather than try to put it together. This is not very comfortable for me, just so you know. I can start with what we do know. My name is John Fennelly and I've been a member of this community for about 14 years. If you haven't spoken with me personally, then you probably know somebody, a family member or a friend that has. I worked at the Chevrolet dealership in Austin for a number of years. And I currently work at Expert Transmission here in town. On May 7th, 2024, I was pulled over for speeding. I was asked for my driver's license and my registration. As I leaned over the glove box for my registration, the officer opened up my driver's door and pulled me from my car. He pulled out his gun, pointed it at me and said, put your hands in the air. And this is where I intended for my presentation to become interactive. Go ahead and put your hands in the air. He's got a gun pointed at you. I says, you cannot do that. You asked for my license and my registration. And he answered, it was too late. He let the dog out of the car and now the police dog is running around barking everywhere. And I asked the officer, what do you want? You have pulled me from my car. Get down on the ground or the dog's going to bite you.
Can I, can I?
Yes, please.
What, was this a sheriff's department? Yeah, what officer?
It was Indiana State Police Department person. Indiana State Police.
Yeah, this was in Wells County.
This was in Wells County. I had thought I had sent an email with the police report to most of all the board members and a copy of what I am describing here. I will be happy to give you a copy of the police reports, but I cannot put them on an email because they are too large. They're on a disc and you have to do the whatever thing. Happy to let you copy that and review it. So as I'm standing there trying to find out what this officer wants, letting him know I am no threat, I do not have any weapons, why did you pull me from my car? What do you want? Get down on the ground, the dog's going to bite you. I says, look, you dragged me from my car. What do you want? And he just stares at me pointing the gun. Dog's running around everywhere. I says, look, let's just stand here and we'll stare at each other until your help gets here. And he orders the dog to bite my left foot. And he orders the dog to bite my left foot. I scream, "You cannot do this." He says, "Get down on the ground, or I'll have him bite your other foot." So, I decide to kneel to get down to the ground. And when I do, the dog bites my foot again. I lay on the ground, I'm handcuffed, and I'm arrested for failure to identify myself and resisting arrest. Horrifying. None of this is on the police video. None of this is on his written report. It is a lie. And the police video has me in action that I did not perform. This is a big problem, and I hope you realize it. That officer's actions need to be accountable, not erasable. And that's the reason I'm here today, not for being dragged from my car, but the fact that it is not accountable. I'm asking this council, before you start funding any police departments, to ask that they have some better twenty-four-seven footage of these cameras, so this cannot happen again. Not only is it not written up in the report, not shown on the report, but it's also showing me doing things and actions I did not do. We all sat here and stood, and we pledged allegiance to that flag and to this republic. I'll stand for it, and that's why I'm here today, and I need your help to do just that.
So, did you file a complaint with the Indiana State Police Department?
I have filed a complaint with the Indiana State Police Department multiple times.
And are you not hearing back?
I'm not hearing back, they will not return my emails. I have emailed the Indiana State Police Investigations Division. They will not return my emails. I have a list of emails that I have sent out. There is a. You know, there's a, there's a tort claim filed, I guess, for, for the incident. But, it's, it's open-ended, I mean, where do we go with this? Ultimately, I, I mean, I can't even get a sit-down with the FBI, which is my next process, and that's what I'm in the process of doing now. Get my computer to work, I made up a, a same-type written, a program. I have sent everybody the same emails that I have sent you. Again, trying to get a sit-down with, with the FBI, it seems that is the proper channels when it comes to the Indiana State Police, that the FBI is the police for them.
Well, it seems like that you're following all the protocols you need to, and then, until you get resolution there, there's, I appreciate you presenting this to this body, but there's only so much we can do on that front. I know the sheriff's body cameras, I mean, they, they work, right?
Not twenty-four-seven, they turn them on and off. That's why I'm here, there's no reason for that.
I assume you have legal counsel representing you?
I have legal counsel, yes.
That's fine.
Well, thank you for coming before us and sharing your story, and we'll continue to take under advisement like we do from all of our counties.
Consider that next time you want to fund the police, what is their policy on camera footage? Can they just do whatever they want?
Well, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else for the greater good? If not, do we have a motion to conclude the meeting? A second, second, whoever. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, just got a few things to sign, and we'll get out of here.